Make our way to our seats and just quiet down and we'll just get ready to get started here. Welcome to our June work session. It's hard to believe it's already June, but it is here. We have a very light agenda tonight and we will have a very light agenda next Monday night because there actually isn't anything on here that we can take a position on yet. We won't have that probably until July. And so, we'll just get started and have some conversation tonight and get some updates. And I will start with some awards, presentations, and proclamations. I have one that I'll talk about and I'll give a little bit of background first. About a month or so ago, I had a lady reach out to me. Her name's Chelsea Hutchings. She lives in Sugar Hill. She has a son by the name of Theo, who is a kindergartner, and Theo has Down Syndrome. And she really wanted to meet with me to talk to me about some challenges that she's having with one of our schools and her inability to actually get her son into a program. He's having to go to secondary elementary school and actually having to take a bus back and forth there every day. And I just mentioned to her that it's probably not a whole lot that I could do with the school system or with the school, but I offered to, you know, to help in any way that I could. That kind of led to a deeper conversation just about special needs kids in our community and the challenges that they have just from an involvement in community standpoint. And we all went to, very recently, ribbon cutting at White Oak Elementary School for an inclusive playground, which is a great addition to our community, but it's only open, you know, when the school is open and so it's not available to all kids all the time. And so, we just talked about, you know, what would there be a problem with just us having a conversation about things that we can do to promote inclusion for kids with special needs? That can be playgrounds, it could be programming at our parks or at the E Center, just what can we do to make certain that those kids are a part of our community? Not only does it benefit them, but it benefits all of us. And so, I talked to Paul about the possibility of just a task force, just a method for us to maybe kind of get together as a community and talk about what we could do for kids with special needs in our community. And I actually mentioned it to Josh and asked him if he would help with it and would actually like for him to kind of maybe take the lead on it. There's a chairmanship position called out in the task force, but that is the background on the task force. Chelsea and I have had a lot of conversations about, you know, what would the expected outcome of a task force be? And to be honest with you, if there's no recommendations that they make, that's fine. I think what she's interested in is just the community having a conversation about special needs kids and ways, again, that we can make them feel a part of our community. And so, that is the background on it. You have the language in the e-Packet. If there's anything that I can change between now and next Monday night, please let me know. I'm glad to do so. And that's it on that one.
Yeah, a question about that. So, I think it sounds like a fine idea. I don't have any problem with it or if we were to implement the boards like they had at the school or whatever. But I was curious, it said meet every month and that sort of thing. Just didn't know if that's something where they might run out of steam, maybe something that needed a little more flexibility and see how they're going to go. I mean, it just seemed like, I didn't necessarily know that they would be stuff to build on every month. Maybe there will be, I don't know. I'm certainly not familiar.
And I'll admit, not all of the language in here is mine and probably every month might be a little bit aggressive and I wouldn't mind changing that and just kind of making it more.
Leave it open then, since this is a task force or something and not a regular board meeting with not a specific assignment.
Absolutely. And I really want to just kind of leave it up to Josh to determine the pace and all of that, so.
That's a great suggestion.
Glad to make it. Yes, Mayor?
I'd also like to suggest that perhaps a member of our city Parks and Rec Department could be on this task force because especially if we're looking at playgrounds and play equipment for children, it might be very valuable to have somebody with that kind of background on the task force.
That's a great suggestion as well. And we can absolutely add that language in there, but there is a sentence in there about staff would support the task force and I'm sure that Paul would make certain that the Parks and Recreation Staff would do that, but I'm glad to add that as well, just to make it clear. Glad to do that. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? And I'll make those changes and I'll get a copy out to everybody. All right, Taylor, I think you're up next.
Yes, thank you. This is a proclamation that Josh Mendoza, who serves on our Downtown Development Authority and is also a teacher at North Gwinnett High School, brought to me and asked if we would honor Coach Randy Black, who is a teacher and a coach at North Gwinnett, has been for a very long time. He's been teaching 34 years and 32 of those at North Gwinnett High School. My understanding is he was there when Paul's son was there as well as a basketball and baseball coach. So, Coach Black has been a part of the community for a long time. He started, it's interesting, we're talking about those children with disabilities and other needs for special education. Coach Black started the Java Dog at North Gwinnett, which is their coffee shop there at the high school and is a training and vocational opportunity for children with disabilities and learning disabilities. And so, the school recently renamed the Java Dog to, I wanted to get the exact name of it, was the, Randy, I think it's Coach Black's Java Dog in honor of Coach Black. So, they recently did that as a surprise to Coach Black and Josh asked me to go ahead and do a proclamation for Coach Black, which I was absolutely happy and delighted to do. So, we're going to declare June 14th as Coach Randy Black Day in Sugar Hill to honor all that Coach Black has given back to the community and also to recognize that nice surprise that the school did for him to recognize the Java Dog and rename it to Coach Black's Java Dog. So, that's all.
Thank you, Taylor. That's a lot of tongue twisters there. Any comments or questions of Taylor? All right. Sounds good. Now, we'll move on to old business and we do have a discussion on the GMEBS plan and I'll start. We have received some, I'll start over. At the request of us, Mr. Hartley had a conversation with the Georgia Municipal Association, specifically the GMEBS planners, and asked what options might be available for us to do an amendment to remove elected officials. They replied back, they gave them some options. Unfortunately, they're not able to prepare an amendment for this meeting and probably not for our next meeting. I think it's going to be available beginning in July for us to take it up. There are, again, two options that Frank outlined for us. One is to grandfather any existing elected officials in, in going forward, not having this available to elected officials. The other option is to immediately freeze the program, making it not available to elected officials in the future. And I think that is kind of dependent on the exact effective date and if we were to have that by July, we could make it effective if we wanted to upon approval by City Council. And that number two is actually what I would kind of like to recommend to everybody unless somebody disagrees with it. Again, if we adopt that amendment and we'll see the language at some point in time in the future, it does away with the options for elected officials going forward for everybody. So, any concern with that? I think we've got to give.
Just clarification on what you said. I think if I heard you right, it wasn't what I read in the document. What I read in there was that it stops either way for, so in no case are future elected officials being on. It's just a matter of what happens with the ones that are currently on it, whether the benefits stop now or whether they would accrue till the end of their service. Right? I believe that.
And I apologize, but that is my knowledge and maybe I did not speak it, but that is my understanding.
I thought I heard you say something different and maybe I was wrong, but yeah, I don't have great heartburn.
You got it. And really, all I'm asking for is a yes or no answer on this. Yeah. It sounds like everybody's okay with option two. Does that give you enough direction? And I think it's effective immediately, effective upon adoption or my signature or whatever.
Yes, Mayor, we can reach out to GMA and tell them that the council would like to proceed forward with option two. Option two is the option that freezes it immediately and so those who are currently participating in their plan will not accrue any benefits after whatever date of the adoption is from this year. And so, they will not, so folks who are currently serving will not continue to accrue benefits while they are serving their current terms, whereas under option one, they would continue to accrue benefits until they are no longer in office.
Yes, sir. That's my understanding as well. Is everybody else's understanding?
Yep.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Hartley. All right. And that is all that we have. Again, a possibility we could have that amendment by July. If that is the case, then we'll put it on the agenda and take it up.
We will provide GMA with a request that we have it for your July 8th meeting, whether the Georgia Municipal Association Convention in Savannah is coming up later this month and their legal team is currently getting ready for that and then some of them typically go on vacation after that feat of putting on that convention. So, that's kind of what's affecting timing a little bit right now is that we're so close to the convention that's later this month. But we will request that they have it available for us before the July 8th meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. All right. Again, that is all that we have on our agenda to discuss, but we do have some reports and discussions, so I'll hand that over to Paul to take care of.
Thank you, Mayor. We will give the public safety report next Monday, if that's okay with the group. Tomorrow night at from 6:00 to 8:00 in the community room downstairs, we'll have Riverlands Master Plan Open House. That'll be the first one. And then, another one on June 11th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, again, in the community room. Hope the community turns out and to participate. The planning process is underway and this is an effort to get the community input on future direction for the Riverlands Master Plan. Our theater and our bowl are in full swing. We've got three rentals in the theater this month that take up about one-third of the time in the theater. The Bowl and the Eagle are booked for 22 days of the 30 days of the month. 13 dates are occupied in the Eagle Theater by a lot of our community partners, the Children's Theater, the summer camp, we've got the Broad Street Jazz Band in there as well. And then, don't forget, we have music at Sugar Hill on the promenade on the 14th and the 21st. And I know I can see you all out there on Saturday morning doing yoga on the plaza. And then, we got Juneteenth set up. Juneteenth, obviously, will be on June 15th. We have our summer market on June 9th and we have splash nights on June 28th, Barbie-themed with the movie Barbie being played at Sundown. Then, we have our second concert in the bowl, Grand Funk Railroad, this Saturday night, the Fray, which a couple of weeks ago did extraordinarily well. With that, I'll turn it over to Troy to give us a construction and operations update and that would conclude my report.
Can I ask a question on that? You said something about the market. I thought that started tomorrow night. Is that not correct? I thought you said the 9th.
I'm sorry, yeah, the farmer's market. We do have the farmer's market starting tomorrow night. I failed to mention that. This was a different, this is a summer market.
Oh, okay.
But thank you for clarifying that. And I know the staff has worked hard. It'll be in the landing starting tomorrow night, weather permitting. And so, every, on Tuesdays, so we're looking forward to that.
Troy?
Thank you. The technology's catching up.
Seems like it's always catching up.
Do you have a construction update that will perform like a PowerPoint here in a moment? One would hope. Yeah. Well, there is a slideshow and it involves construction projects that are currently underway. The first of which is the Alton Tucker Boulevard realignment project. And... The Alton Tucker Boulevard realignment project is nearing the finish line and see some images on the screen of the new road alignments in the downtown with Level Creek being realigned. You recall, formerly, there was an old building in front of the old city hall that was part of a right-of-way acquisition that took a number of years for us to get accomplished. And then, we looked at some cost-effective alternatives to what was a very challenged offset intersection at those two locations. And the recommendation from the design team was to realign Alton Tucker with Highway 20. And the roads that you see in the aerial photo are the result of all of that, probably five years of design work on that. So, we're nearing the finish line. Some of the final work that has to be completed. What you see in the image is temporary striping. There will be final thermoplastic striping for the crosswalks and other locations. And then, we're installing stamped asphalt as well as a part of that. The area to the east on the left side of the image of the balance of Alton Tucker will be part of the resurfacing program, so it'll be milled and resurfaced. The intersection of Highway 20, we were notified by GDOT and Gwinnett that the milling had to extend into the intersection, so the intersection had to be milled and resurfaced. That was done a couple of weeks ago with the signal, the balance of the signal work being completed week before last and into last week with the signal being activated Two images there. There will be some final striping that includes signage about not blocking the intersection, if that's a concern. One other project I want to update you on is the stream bank restoration project at Gary Perkel Park. That project was prepared for, the documents were prepared for advertisement. Bids were requested to be submitted by the 23rd of May. We received no bids and seven plan holders had sets of plans. So, we've reached out to those that picked up plans to find out a little bit more about it and so we're going to be recommending a couple of different options to you in the future, but right now, we're restructuring the contract opportunity and providing a new way to approach the project. So, some of the responses we got were that they were busy, which is code for there's not enough opportunity to make money on this project or it's too small or I've got enough on my plate. The other questions and concerns were about working in a stream like Richland Creek. So, there was concerns about the potential for having erosion control violations in a very sensitive area, which you can appreciate. So, we're looking at a better way to approach it, maybe without, the other concern was about the type of stone that was required for armoring the embankment, so we'll look at a new way to approach that and make some recommendations based on that.
Absolutely. I think Taylor might have a question.
Troy, just a couple of questions on, what is our estimated budget cost on that stream bank restoration?
It was going to be $400,000. We had, I think, $500 in the budget this year, so I don't have any way to true that up with any hard bid information.
Gotcha. Yeah. And then, on the other side of that is, it's getting pretty close to the walkway that's along there. And I know that the stream bank restoration comes with certain planting requirements and certain timing on those planting requirements and that sort of thing. What are we, from a, from a potential of losing part of the sidewalk and/or timing for being actually able to implement the plan this year before it gets worse, what are you thinking from that standpoint if we had no bids on this initially?
I'd like to look at the armoring at the lower levels of the stream bank to come up with a better way to accomplish that without risk of losing the rock. Gabions are a good way to do that. We, I don't know, we were counseled against it, but it wasn't one of the first options that was presented. There were some other projects that use larger riprap that were recommended by the consultant. I think there were just some folks that didn't want to dump Class III riprap. It takes up a lot of space in the dump truck and there's just a lot of trips that have to be made with that type of material. So, Gabian Basket gives you a chance to, so that's what, I think that's the angle we'll take on that. And then, if there's a way for us to maybe divide the contract into the hardscape part of it and the vegetative solution as another part of it, just to get the right people looking at it, that may be another way to approach it. And then, of course, if we can get the project small enough, we can maybe structure a time and materials format or some other creative contracting solution. There are state contracts in place that have been approved by the state of Georgia, so we might look at opportunities to utilize some of that and see if there's a way to streamline the procurement.
One other thing on there, I assume you, have you walked the length of Richland Creek through the park?
Can't say that I've walked the entire length of it, no.
Yeah, because I know, excuse me, during, we did, back in '21 or '20, we did a cleanup along there that actually cleaned Richland Creek from the far end all the way over to Swanee Dam Road. And there's, I mean, there's a lot of places where Richland Creek is suffering heavy erosion. Now, my recollection is this was the only spot that was actually impacting potentially infrastructure or the park itself. I guess it might be good if we didn't get any plan holders to maybe just revisit the stream bank along the, throughout the park. Maybe there's other places where there needs to be some stabilization. We can take some proactive measures to make the project a little bigger that might be more enticing to folks and also, you know, maybe solve some future problems that may pop up over time. There may be a way to, if it becomes a much, you know, maybe twice its size, maybe you get some more interest in it and, because it is certainly also a concern too, as we move into the summer months, this is when we have our major storm events, potential for tropical weather and that sort of thing that would impact, it could potentially impact Richland Creek, but also could impact the construction, constructability timeline as well. But anyway, just some thoughts. I think it's a, obviously, it's a very important project because it's quickly coming towards the sidewalk out there, so.
I will say, if we change the project limits, there is the risk that we would have to go through some permitting, so it might be where, if there's a less intrusive way for us to do this particular segment, maybe easier and quicker to use the permit that we've got.
And I wish I had some advice to give you. I just have just some experience from Crayfish Creek, which is a very similar situation. And I know that everything looks easy on paper, but when you get out in the field, there's a lot more to it. And I think that the contractors discovered that at Crayfish Creek. And so, there may be a little bit of nervousness about what they're actually getting themselves into. And to Taylor's point, I'm not even sure if, you know, it's a long-term fix, to be honest with you, because if you look at Richland Creek, Crayfish Creek, Level Creek, they're all having the same challenges. We just happen to have infrastructure in this spot, so hopefully, we can figure something out. Thank you.
Okay. It should advance to the next project update. I want to let you know, I think we've probably shared some emails, but the railroad has completed the upgrade to the crossing at First Avenue and linear Old Atlanta, all the roads that come together there. They did not add a whole lot of shoulder paving to the location, but we did get them to stripe edge lines. We're going to stripe the center line and provide some additional raised pavement markers for the location just to add some guidance as people turn in the area. I also am looking at some other more structural upgrades to Railroad Avenue to provide some grade assistance so the southbound right turn onto First Avenue is a little bit easier to make at the regulator station. So, the intersection of North Price, Old Atlanta, Chili, Old Swanee intersection, we did get a price to install some additional four-way stop at this location. So, there will be some striping that will be part of it. The signs went up, I believe, last week and so we'll be completing that in the next couple of weeks. The idea, I think, in the future is that we would look for a new form of traffic control here that might be like a mini roundabout. We've got some study work that shows that could potentially fit in here with some right-of-way acquisition and the potential for another unfortunate gas regulator relocation, but I'll bring you up to date on one more gas item here in a minute. That'll help that conversation. And then, First Avenue street lighting, we're having to trim back some of the tree limbs before that gets installed, so it didn't, it's not going to happen as quickly as we anticipated, so that is expected to start this month. Hopefully, get that done within the span of the month.
Troy, is each of those a light location? I see like a...
It says E.
Yeah. Great. So, that closest one to the railroad tracks is going to help a little bit too with people that are driving through that area at night. I know that I hear a lot about the darkness in that area, so.
It will help, but the right-of-way, the railroad right-of-way is pretty wide.
Yeah. And I think there's some limitations regarding lights, like near the railroad tracks, because it can blind people, so, I mean, we're doing about the best that we can do, so.
I thought the railroad looked a lot better just from the, even it's two feet asphalt, wherever they added in the stripe. To me, it was a lot more visible where the edge was than previous. I thought that was a big improvement.
One other operations update that I wanted to mention is we have been meeting with...
Josh, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, Troy knows what I'm about to ask him. Are the streetlights on First Avenue going to match, as previously discussed, with all the other ones in the city?
They have been advertised as 4,000 bay lights.
Okay.
But the rep from Georgia Power has not always been correct when he's given me that information. But I will reiterate the importance of distant light or color temperature.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Can't we just change the light bulbs? No, it's not that easy.
I don't think anybody does bulbs anymore, but the gas operations update I wanted to mention to you is we've been meeting with Transco. They are the transmission company that operates a big pipeline through Georgia and sells to the municipal gas operators. We are probably at a point where they are... We are probably at a point where they are sending gas on the other arm of the transmission main that, excuse me, I'm doing a poor job of explaining this, but Atlanta Gaslight also has taps off of. We are growing in our sales of gas, and it's time for us to upgrade our tap location. So to provide the additional capacity we need and also to step down the pressures at the tap location, we are working with them on a project that will accomplish that, that will get started towards the end of this year. It really won't mean much to the customers. It's just something that, as we grow, we continue to make plans for additional capacity in our system and provide the pressure that we need to supply gas to our customers. So I'll tell you a bit more about that as we get further along in the conversations about schedule and about what it will mean.
I think.
There is a cost associated with it, and we've budgeted that. So then we've also got some upgrades we'll be making at our regulator stations. So two regulator stations that I mentioned that are on Old Atlanta and by North Price, those are two that we are reexamining the pressures in our system. And because we are interconnected, we don't rely on them as much as we used to. So it's a little bit like on a wastewater system. You may not want as many pump stations as sometimes we've had in the past. Gwinnett County gets rid of them at every opportunity they can. Not the same thing in the case of gas, but we have locations where we may want to eliminate some of these regulator stations. So the two that I just mentioned are two of the candidates we're looking at potentially eliminating. So when it comes time to relocation work for roadway projects, those two may be ones that we look at.
So I have a question for you there. When you talk about the Transco line, that's connection point there is off Beaufort Highway. Is that Wages Way or what was the name of that road over there?
EV is, yeah.
Right. So anyway, right in front of there, there's a big building that's being built. What is that building, first of all?
I don't think I know the answer to that.
It, okay. And so with its proximity to that pipeline and when they did some work on that pipeline, you know, it's a big hill there, and they cut down that side where they ran the pipeline down it. So I don't think it's as deep underground, you know, as originally was before that pipeline was in there. I would just say, to whatever extent, we need to make sure that they know.
There's enough cover.
Valuable and that pipeline is, and a lot of problems could be caused with their work around there.
One other quick project-related update. We are nearing the end of our review of the final Parks Recreation and Green Space Master Plan. We were hoping to have it ready for this month's set of meetings, but we'll give us some time to clean up the document and get it ready for July. So we're close on that. As it relates to the proclamation and task force agenda item, there are some recommendations about inclusive facilities. So that'll be a good springboard for that group to take it and make their own set of specific recommendations.
Troy, a question for you. Do you have any insight into GDOT's widening of Highway 20 from Beaufort Highway to PIB? Do we have a timeline on that as of yet? Because I know that will be a big traffic impactor for lots of our residents.
There is a preconstruction meeting that's been set up, I believe, for the 14th. And so I'll know more about the schedule after that preconstruction meeting. They've awarded the contract to ERSNL. That's about all I know at this point.
Yes, Paul?
As Troy talks about the Transco and capacity and pressure and those types of things, the improvements we're going to have to make are not cheap. So we will be bringing you that at some point in time in the future, but it's a necessary investment in our gas utility moving forward. So just didn't want you to be shocked when we bring you a price tag that is pretty.
All right. Thank you. Anything else from a report standpoint? All right. I do know that we have a need for executive session. We've got two real estate matters to discuss and an HR issue that Ms. Avery would like to bring up. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. We are going to go into executive session. We will have no action to take outside of it, but we'll come back out when we're done Hi, Jane is ready. So we are back from executive session. We discussed two real estate matters and a personnel matter. We have no action to take outside of executive session, so I am looking and asking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank goodness. All those in favor of adjourned, raise your right hand. All right, we are adjourned. See you next Monday night.